And for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the Commissioner meeting Tuesday, January, excuse me, Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. With that being said, I guess we'll begin. Any input on the agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion by the Commission.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, the second, by Aaron's and Landine to approve the agenda. Kristen, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, thank you. Moving on, public input on the consent agenda items? If not, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Aaron's. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. All right, moving on then to our regular business. Item number one, Wendy Sweeter.
Wendy Sweeter, on behalf of Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation, this is just to give notice to the county of a raffle that they want to do at their fundraising event on March 23rd. So it's selling 100 tickets at $20 each, and they are looking to raffle a Savage 308 rifle, a Henry 22 rifle, and a Pointer 12 gauge shotgun.
Are you looking for a motion to approve, Wendy?
It's just a notice.
Pardon?
It's just a notice to let you know that it's happening.
Is that the same night as your fundraiser?
Yes.
Any discussion by this Commission? All right, I guess. Thank you, Wendy.
Commissioner Chair?
Yes.
In light of the fact that we have had contributions made to that night, will you be around for that so we can?
I'm not sure yet, but I will, might have to delegate someone to be there in my absence.
Okay.
How does that sound?
All right.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number two. Again, Mr. Anderson, is he here? Paul?
It's Eric Kunsweiler's.
Come on up, Steve, and come in the microphone.
Okay, Eric.
Yep.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Thanks for having me on the agenda today. Eric Kunsweiler, Interlakes Community Action. Our main office is in Madison. However, we cover 14 counties on the east central side of the state, including Lincoln County, so that's why I'm here today. Our prior CEO, Cindy Danabring, had been with ICAP for a very long time, 35, 40 years. And just to kind of keep with what she used to do in the past, I'd like to come in front of you every other year or so just to give you a quick services report for what ICAP provides in your county. In South Dakota, there's four community action agencies. We're one of the four nationwide. We cover 99% of the counties, six, all 66 counties in South Dakota. We do have some overlapping services, as if you heard Jim and I's conversation before the meeting here. Rural Office of Community Services, ROCKS, out of Wagner, Lake Andes area, does have some of the services that we provide in some of our other counties, such as weatherization. And I would like to mention the weatherization program, which ROCKS administers for Lincoln. It's important because there is a huge influx of money there. South Dakota received approximately $5 to $7 million over the next five years. And what weatherization can do is they can come into the homes here in Lincoln County and take a look at, they'll audit the homes to see what they can do to make them more energy efficient, whether that's windows, doors, siding, shingles, insulation, things like that. So really important program. The handout of having your packets there is two-sided, and it gives a brief summary of the services that we provided in Lincoln County over the last year. In addition to the other side is all the programs that are available in Lincoln County. And I did put our website up there at the top, interlakescap.com. When you go to our website, it has all of our programs broken out for Lincoln County, as you see there. But if you click on them, it'll tell you exactly what the program does and what the eligibility requirements are for each one. So lots of things there. One thing that we've really worked hard on since the COVID pandemic is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. ICAP has helped several other agencies administer about $65.5 million in rental assistance and utility assistance. In Lincoln County, 1,052 families have utilized that program, so quite a few families. Other than that, the main, one of the main things that ICAP's done since we were here last is we reduced our Board of Directors size. We used to be, we used to have a large Board of Directors, 42 members, which consisted of three people from each county, representing the low-income sector, the public sector, and the private sector. So we did reduce our board down to 15 board members a few, about a year and a half, two years ago. Commissioner Schmidt is on our board as a public sector representative, representing Lincoln and Minnehaha County, which is Region 5. So again, we have five regions, 15 members, one from each of the three sectors that I mentioned there. Other than that, that is all I have unless you have questions on my services report or anything else.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Just, you said 1,052 families. How long of a time period has that been?
That would have been since 20, really it ramped up about 2021 is really when it started, late 20, early 2021.
And then how do you get referrals?
We get them through a number of ways. Julie Anderson's our community service worker located here in the courthouse, also covers a couple other counties. For the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, they do have an online portal. So if you just Google "Emergency Rental Assistance," it's all over the place. But yeah, we get referrals through most, you know, those types of outlets in addition to our partners that we work with.
Commissioner Schmidt, do you have anything to add?
Well, I was just going to say that, I mean, ICAP covers a great number of things, and they certainly touch a lot of lives. ICAP has, what do you got? Heartland House. What else you got in Sioux Falls?
Yeah.
Talk about the new building you got coming up.
Yeah, we got a lot of things going on in Sioux Falls. We, once our projects are done, we're going to have 171 affordable housing units in Sioux Falls. Right now, we're constructing a 41-unit low-income housing tax credit property, about almost $10 million project on the corner of 41st Street and TLS Road. We just recently acquired the Children's Inn, the former Children's Inn building, which is adjacent to the ICAP Services Building, so that allows us to expand our footprint in Sioux Falls. And with that is a key partnership with the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House. We're remodeling the shelter portion of that building, so it'll include 10 family suites for homeless families with children that will be able to move in there. And then we're also working on acquiring a 12-unit apartment building in central Sioux Falls in which we'll rehab, and that'll also be a low-income-based housing opportunity. And, you know, our bread and butter, working with homeless family, any family for that matter, but especially homeless families, is case management. So we have housing stabilization coaches and community service workers that work one-on-one with the family, intense case management, help them with the supports. But at the end of the day, our main goal is to get them off of all instances of public support or supportive services, and ultimate goal is for self-sufficiency.
Do you have volunteers that help with your construction then, or?
Kind of depends on the project, but yes. However, with the big projects, we have partnered with Lloyd Companies and a local contractor for the Community Commons Building.
Any other questions from this Commission?
Eric, to be eligible for this housing rehab, what are the guidelines, income guidelines that they have to follow?
For housing rehab, I believe is 80% AMI.
Yep.
Yep. Yep. And a lot of times, I mean, with ROCKS down here in Lincoln County, it's a little bit more difficult, but we try to get the rehab program and the weatherization program to work together to stretch that dollar a little bit further.
Okay, any other questions by this Commission? If not, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming down, Eric.
Moving on to item number three, Board action to approve and authorize the Chair to execute an agreement for detention services between Minnehaha County Lutheran Social Services, South Dakota and Lincoln County for the period of January 1, 2024, to December 31, 2024. I know that, what, Jamie is here?
Yep.
And so you probably, and did you have something first?
Nope. I was just going to introduce Jamie and see if there are any questions.
Hi, speak into the mic. Tell us your name and address, please.
My name is Jamie Gravitt. I'm the Director of the Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center. Our address is 4200 Southwest Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Before you today is our annual contract. It's a lot different than the years past. We're in the middle of a construction project, and we were trying to find the most equitable way to make sure that everybody pays their equal share for a new facility to be available for everyone. In the past, there were discounts given to partner counties that compact or joint powers agreement has been dissolved. So there is no more reduced or prices given to any partner counties. So that brought you up to the full cost of the facility, plus then now any construction costs that are included in the new price of $458.
How much of an increase was this this year than previously?
You went from $278 to now $458.
And that's a night, right, Jamie?
Yeah, per night. Correct. Per night, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. And that started in January already, correct?
That's correct.
Do you want to break that down? We have $458, and LSS will be at $289.
Correct. LSS is a non-secure shelter care.
So that would be a separate area for them to have kids?
It's designed for lower-level offenders. We don't really want them mixing with the more dangerous crowd that we have in JDC. We utilize what's called the Risk Assessment Instrument. It's a statewide instrument to determine where kids are held. So that still continues. We're not going to be trying to put people in JDC that don't belong in JDC because of the higher rate.
What is the timeline? Because I remember we went through your existing facilities. I think Commissioner Aaron's and I went through at the same time. It was a shocking thing to watch that facility still being used, but.
It is, and we're building for the future. We're going to build to last for the next 35 years and provide beds for people that need beds for the next 35 years. We're building individual housing units that will house eight youth per housing unit. Our standard is that we have to have one staff for every eight youth, and realistically, that's what makes juvenile detention so expensive. When you compare it to an adult jail, they don't have those restrictions. So for example, the Minnehaha County Jail has housing units of 24 beds, 48 beds, 65 beds, and they can put one staff in those areas. Every area that I have youth in, if I have eight youth, I have to have a staff. If it goes to nine youth, I have to add another staff. So that's what makes it so expensive. And those are pre-regulation Prison Rape Elimination Act regulations that we have to follow. We're pre-certified. But getting back to your question, we actually finished the first component of our construction just yesterday. We had to remove some power lines that were going across where we were going to be building, had them moved, put underground, finished that yesterday. Bids have went out for subcontractors. I believe they're supposed to be back this week or next week, and our goal is still April 1st to start. The first portion would be tearing down a portion of our housing unit, and then it's removing earth, replacing the earth with construction film and building the housing units intake area. Medical and mechanical is the first phase. We're supposed to be able to move our kids from our existing building into the new building by August of '25. Once that's completed, then we'll tear down our existing building, and they'll build the second phase, which is administration and courts and a community room for people to use, staff locker rooms, which our staff have never had. Those types of things are in the second phase. Substantial completion for the whole project is October of '26.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Jamie, do you know what Lincoln County's average number of kids are that are held in these facilities?
I don't know the exact number, but I'll get that to you probably by the end of today.
Yeah, thank you.
I know you're the third largest user behind Minnehaha County in the Department of Corrections.
Okay.
Are your services needed at night? I know you mentioned your day and evening rate.
No, no, it's the same rate.
Okay.
No matter what. We're open 24/7.
That's what I was wondering, if you were open 24/7.
Yeah, we accept kids at any time of the day or night as needed.
Jamie, are you seeing an increase in the numbers?
No, not really. We've been staying pretty steady for the past four years. We were at about 27 to 27 and a half for three years straight. This last year, we saw a slight increase to 29 youth per day. But the overall numbers are sitting anywhere from 10,200 to 10,600 youth served per year.
Per year. Are you seeing any difference in the severity of the individuals that you're serving?
The difference that I'm seeing is the quickness to violence. When they don't get their way, it's automatically, they don't use the flight portion of their fight or flight. They're using fight. They haven't been taught what no means, and a lot of times, they don't handle being told no or being told how to do something. And their first reaction is that they're going to react with their fists. We've seen an increase in assaults within the facility. We've seen, most of the cases that I see constantly being, having temporary custody hearings in the mornings are domestic violence cases, assaulting a family member and being held. I'd say that's our largest increase that we've seen is in the domestic violence situations.
What's the average length of the stay?
Overall, I think it's around 30 days. I don't believe Lincoln County is as high in that area. One of the contributing factors for the high length of stay is the direct transfer cases into adult court. We were averaging about four or five of those a day. We've been up to nine of those a day this last year. But I don't believe there's been a high number from Lincoln County. There are mainly Minnehaha County and some other counties.
Most of your students, so to speak, are they primary, intermediate, or high school students?
Mainly high school, some intermediate. We can hold from age 10 to 18. If they turn 18, while they're at our facility, they move on to the county jail or prison, depending on what we're holding them for.
Is there ever any kind of cost recovery from the family? I mean, obviously, we're dealing with juveniles here, but how does that work, if at all?
Some counties do do that, not all, and the judge would need to order that.
Okay, like as a restitution piece or something?
I believe so.
Okay.
I think they do it similar to what public defenders' costs are.
Sure.
I, you know, I do believe there's some other ways for you to get some money from the state for certain types of services that we're going to be offering you. I just received a letter last week about those types of recovery, and I'll be talking to your sheriff about that to make sure he got that letter as well. But there's ways to recover transportation costs. There's ways to recover some of the costs for our beds. There's ways for you to recover costs for utilizing electronic monitoring. I just need to make sure that we all qualify. Previously, we haven't qualified because of our compact.
Oh, yeah, I'm just kind of doing some back-of-the-envelope math here. And if you take the average stay times the new rate, you know, you're looking at per kid about $14,000 per kid, per average stay. That's a substantial amount of money.
It is.
It adds up.
And unfortunately, the limits that I read in that letter, it's going to save you the cost of one kid because I think there's a cap of $20,000 to recover per county.
Okay.
Your success rate, how do you measure that?
It's hard to measure. We don't always hear about the successes unless the kids tell us about it. We only hear about the failures when we see them in the news.
You know, when you start talking about the money that is spent in a remediation, if you could spend that on the front end and prevention and providing maybe more counseling, more areas when they're much younger. And not only does it save money, but it also affects families, it affects kids, it affects all of those. So, I mean, I think that those words have been uttered how many times, and yet we really haven't paid any attention to ourselves at all, so.
I think you're 100% correct. However, Lincoln County has taken steps to prevent kids from coming into the Juvenile Detention Center. You've hired a diversion officer. I know she's working hard to prevent kids from coming to JDC. She's working hard to look for more alternatives within the community. An example of that is an evening report center. I know in this contract, it talks about an evening report center, but right now, that's limited to kids in Lincoln County that go to Sioux Falls Public Schools due to transportation limitations that we have for that program. I know she's talked to LSS about trying to develop one for Lincoln County. The other good thing about that diversion officer that you have is that there is funding available that they're talking about in the legislature this year, where it would increase the reimbursement rate for successful diversions from $250 to $750. So that's quite a significant increase that will help her or your state's attorney, however they use that, but help them implement programs just like what you're talking about, where they may have done something really silly, and they can recover from it and not have to go deeper into the juvenile justice system.
It's good to hear that we've done something right.
Yeah. We all learn, and we all move forward. That's what we're trying to do, so.
This is a substantial increase in cost. However, you know, how do you measure success? If you save two or three kids, I mean, there's no amount of money that dictates success or not, but.
An old adage that I used to be told when I was early in my career was that everybody had talked about Ted Williams, and what was Ted Williams famous for? Well, he was famous for hitting, I believe it was 400 in a season. Well, that means he had to fail six times out of 10. So I've always worked throughout my career thinking, if I can save four kids out of 10 and keep them from going deeper into the system, then I should be in the Hall of Fame.
And probably this has increased since 2019 as well, correct?
Excuse me?
With COVID 2019, these number of students have increased substantially, correct?
They have.
You know, Jamie, these words get tossed around a lot about, "Thank you for your service." But after going through your facility and seeing the challenges that you have and the clientele that you have to work with, "Thank you for your service," because that has to be a, you and your staff have to have a special calling to want to do that. That is not an easy job.
Thank you. My staff deserve the praise. They do the work eight hours a day. I try to guide them in any way I can, but they do the hard work.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Jamie. Any other questions by this Commission? If not, is there any public input? Okay, I guess what we need here is, no less, Board action to approve. So I guess I'm asking for a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Landine, seconded by Schmidt. Any other discussion? I guess Kristen, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Next.
Yes.
I guess Sheri?
Good morning, Sheri Lynn, Lincoln County Auditor. I'm up here today to talk to you about changing the current US Bank credit cards that we have to the US Bank point purchasing cards. What they'll do is they'll become a reward card, and we'll receive cash back on the purchases that we make, and then hoping to utilize the cards more to receive more reward points or reward cash back. So I just need you to approve the, and authorize it to sign the purchasing addendum with US Bank and allow the auditor to make automatic payments outside of pay meetings.
Any, I guess, discussion amongst this board for Sheri on this?
Just a question. Sheri, have you done any estimate on how much that will bring back to the county in the cash back? Do you have any idea? In '23, we spent $85,000 on credit card purchases, and that was without, you know, just typical purchases. So 1.8%, so $8,000-ish. And, you know, we could move it to where we put our utility bills and things like that on the card and then have them pay, you know, things that we know that are going to get paid, and then have them paid off right away and get the rewards back on it.
Any other questions for Sheri? Public input on this matter? If not, again, I guess we're looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Landine, seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion? Okay, Kristen, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item number five. Sheri?
So my next item is with the new credit card, I wanted to update our credit card agreement for cardholders and update the credit card policy. So my request would be to approve the Lincoln County One Card Agreement and update the employee handbook under item 14.3, the credit card policy as attached.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
I guess, just a second, Commissioner Aaron's. Any public input? Okay, no. Mr. Aaron?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
A motion by Aaron, seconded by Landine. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, Mr. Floyd.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Terry Floyd, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. Did I take the mouse away? All right. All right. All right. First item I have for you is Board action to approve and authorize the Chair to sign a resolution to select a consultant for the 2024 bridge inspections. So once again, I'll remind you or refresh your memory that several, a couple of years ago here, we changed from doing all 150 structures in one year to splitting it out, so we do half of them one year, half the other year, and then they, on a rotating schedule. Again, these are required, are federally mandated inspections. They need to happen every two years, so. And in this resolution, basically, we're selecting IMAG as our consultant to do the inspections.
Terry, how many bridges do we need to inspect every year?
So we have, the last count, I think we're at 151 structures total. Now, some of these have been, bridges have been taken out and they put in box culverts. So if it's a box culvert, the box culvert doesn't have to be inspected, but every four years. But bridges, any bridge has to be inspected every two years. So this year, we're doing 80. So, so this year, we're doing 84, I think, or that are on the list for this year. And last year, we did 70, around 70 last year, I think, 69 or something last year, so.
So basically, if someone said how many bridges or structures there are in Lincoln County, there's about 151?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and with some of the, so some of the work we've been doing, we've been adding a few here and there. Again, we've had some in the past that where we had bridges on township roads. Those structures are needing to be replaced and in their replacement, you know, we do the engineering on them and they, they're, they're going to be larger, they're going to exceed that 20-foot of opening and then it becomes a county structure. And again, we've had some structures on our own roads that we've, we've done the engineering on and those structures have upsized as well and those, you know. So we're adding, adding a few here and there and then, and over the years, there's been a few on township roads that, that we just kind of missed, you know, that, you know, come across the, you know, a vacated, not vacated road, but a road closed, minimum maintenance or something, and you go down there and it's like, there's a bridge down, it's not on our system, so we, yep, it's a bridge, should be on our system, so we got to add it back to our system, so. But, you know, on the, on the flip side of that, we do, we do get to remove some structures as well. You know, we had one removed last year. I think the year before that, we had one removed as well from the system, so. So it kind of plus and minuses, but we're sticking around that 150. I think we've been as low as like 146, but I think we've been up to like 155, so.
Thank you.
So in selecting a consultant?
Yes.
Yeah, how do you?
Yep, basically, we're, they, the state gives us an approved list of engineers, consultants to do these inspections and it's my recommendation that we select IMAG to do those.
You always what?
To select IMAG to do those inspections for us this year, so.
Okay. Any public input on this? If not, I guess I'm ready to.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion by Aaron's.
I'll second.
Second by Landine. Is there any discussion? If not, call roll please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, thank you. Next item, item number seven, again, annual supply bids, Terry?
All right, this one here is probably going to take a little bit, but, so I'm going to go through the bid tab that we had for our annual supply bids that we do for the highway department. First one I'm going to do is concrete products. Again, I had two bidders this year. One was ChemCast Pipe and PreCast out of Hartford and the other one was Old Castle Infrastructure. Typically, we award both of these because they'll have certain sizes. One is lower than the other price. Again, it's, it's, if we wanted to go back and look through, it's in the packet of stuff I have in here, so my recommendation is to award both of those bids, so.
Okay, any public input? Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Schmidt, seconded by Aaron's. Any discussion?
Yeah, just to clarify, Commissioner Schmidt, that's, that's to prove it as stated by Terry, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, is that clear?
Yep.
Let's see, did I ask for public input?
You did.
Yeah, I did, okay, thank you. Go ahead then, we have a motion and a second, call roll please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, thank you.
Next item is going to be crushed concrete. We had two bidders. We had Knife River with a bid of eleven dollars a ton and we had LG Everest with a bid of twelve seventy a ton, so recommendations to award the bid to Knife River for eleven dollars a ton for crushed concrete.
Okay, any questions from the commission? Public input on the matter?
Move to approve.
Motion by Aaron's.
Second.
Second by Schmidt. Discussion? Call roll please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, thank you.
Next item I have is cutting edges and snowplow blades. So this one, we, we bid two items. The first item is three-quarter inch by six inch by four foot carbide cutting edge or cutting blade and we had three bidders on that item. It's DMC wear parts was two hundred and thirty-one dollars a foot or per blade. Titan Machine was two hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Equipment Blades was two hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-two cents and Wear Parts and Equipment was two hundred and ninety dollars per four-foot section. So a low bid on that one is Equipment Blades at two, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. My recommendation is to award that to them.
Not so foot, you said?
That's per blade, per four-foot.
Is that, are they all the same quality, Terry?
Yes and no. So there are different specs and basically what it's going to come down to is the hardness of the steel.
Yeah.
We've had this over the years. When we started getting, when we, when we were getting some cutting edges out of Canada, I think those are really hard metal and then we end up starting getting some others, or maybe they were from here and then they were, it was one of the way, the other, but some of them are a softer metal. But again, some of it has to do, each one of these cutting edges have, or these, they have a carbide insert, so sometimes it depends on the size, the width, the depth of that carbide insert, sometimes those will vary. But typically in the spec, we have that to where it's, it's pretty close, so.
Okay, public input, item number nine. Any other questions by this commission? All right, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve to equipment blades.
Motion by Aaron's, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Landine, seconds, call roll please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, thank you.
All right, next one on cutting edges is we have a seven-eighths inch by six inch by four-foot rubber flex blade. These are for the snowplows on the trucks. Again, we had four bidders, three bidders on those. Bitter number one is DMC wear parts at three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents per four-footer. Titan Equipment is four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seven cents and Equipment Blades is four hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-eight cents and Wear Parts and Equipment did not bid on those. Low bid on this one is DMC wear parts, so my recommendation is to award the bid to DMC wear parts for three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents per blade.
And how many, how many do you need per truck then?
These will put three on per, per, per plow.
Okay.
How many plows do we have?
Fourteen.
Okay.
Not, so, so we don't run all of these rubbers on all, all the trucks. We do run the regular carbide. We run them on, on some of the truck blades depending on where, what route they're on, so.
How long do they last?
We're finding that the, so here a few years ago, we tried these rubber flex ones and they're, we're getting a little more life out of them. So typically what we do is on the steel blades or on the, on the carbide blades, regular steel ones, we'll put, we'll double them on the plow. So instead of three across, you'll have, they'll be back to back, so we'll have six of them on each plow. And we've been finding that with the single rubber flex, we can get just as much wear out of those or maybe a little bit longer than we do a double set of, of regular carbides. So, and we're, we're starting to, we're starting to make that transition to maybe shift a few more over into the rubbers rather than the, the carbide, but we still need the carbide because the carbides, we still run on all of the wings, so.
Depends, I suppose, on the winter and how hard the snow is.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just looked last year, we went through 185, 190 of the carbides and we went through 35 of the rubbers last year in 2023, so.
Okay.
But that, you know, so that's only from January of 2023 to December of 2023. So, and we had a lot of winter prior to that in 2022 for 2023 winter, but, so that number might be a little skewed, but.
Any other questions by this commission for Terry? Public input on this matter? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve to the DMC wear.
Second.
Yes, motion by Aaron's, seconded by Landine. No other discussion, call roll please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, thank you.
Next item I have diesel fuel and ethanol. So first we'll do the diesel fuel, I had three bidders. Kohl's Petroleum was at 276 a gallon, Stern Oil was 292 a gallon and Volant Oil was 283 a gallon. I'm going to read through the gas because we're going to award both of these to the same company, so the ethanol gas, Kohl's Petroleum was 276 a gallon, Stern Oil was 281 a gallon and Volant Oil was 277 a gallon. So my recommendation is going to be award low bid to Kohl's Petroleum for both diesel fuel at 276 a gallon and the ethanol at 256 a gallon.
256?
Yes.
Okay. What, where are they located?
Stern, Kohl's.
Yeah.
Madison.
Yeah, yep.
Are they in Madison?
Yes, I believe so. I think you're right.
Madison.
And their service is good? I mean.
Yes, yeah, we, yeah, we like having them, I mean, they're easy to work with, so.
Okay. Okay, and how many gallons do you use? I suppose it depends again on.
It'll be, so I, I advertise for 40,000 gallons of gas of ethanol a year and I think we're probably in that lower 30,000 is what we use, mid thirties. Diesel fuel, I advertise for up to 60,000 gallons of diesel and again, that, that kind of varies with the type of winter we have or what we're doing in the summer if we have a lot of, you know, if we're hauling a lot of mix or materials, you know, so. And I, and I think we're generally right around the 50, 50,000 gallons of that, maybe low fifties, so.
Terry, does, does this purchase of diesel fuel and ethanol power all Lincoln County vehicles or just your department?
Yes, so, yes, it does. It does, it's for the countywide, so all the other departments are set up at our fuel pumps out there to get gas or diesel, so.
But you order countywide.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so actually, this here is probably countywide, so.
Yep.
Any other questions for Terry? Public input on this matter?
Move to approve to Kohl's.
Okay, we have a motion by Aaron's to approve.
I'll second.
A second by Landine. Any other discussion? Call roll please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Next item I have is mag chloride bid. I had one bidder, that's Dustbusters Incorporated out of Wyoming. I had a bid of one dollar and 39 cents per gallon applied. And typically with this, we're running probably 40, 48,000 gallons a year is what we typically do, so.
Okay, any discussion, questions for Terry by the commission? Not public input? Okay, saying none, I guess, do I have a motion?
So moved to approve to Dustbusters.
Motion by Aaron's.
I'll second.
Second by Landine. Call roll please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, thank you.
All right, next item I got is plants, plant mixed asphalt materials. We had two bidders for all types of materials. My recommendation is going to be to award all these bids, all three materials to both contractors and I'll give you the pricing here. So Knife River, first of all, hot mix, class G type one is 66 dollars a ton, Merlyn Roy's is 66, 90, not 66 dollars and 95 cents a ton. Type two with Knife River is 68 dollars a ton, with Merlyn Roy's, it's 66, 95 a ton and with class G fines is 130 dollars a ton at Knife River and 130 dollars a ton at Merlyn Roy's. So my net recommendation is going to be to award all these because mixed, mixed design will vary on projects we, will be using and in location. Again, this year with, been speaking with some folks from LG Everest, Merlyn Roy's and they will be opening up an asphalt plant hopefully this year down south where with just off of the 110, County Road 110, the exit down there, exit 71. So that's going to save us considerable time, so, so, yeah. And typically we'll do, I think this year I had 18,000 ton planned for, for Lincoln County forces to lay out, so.
Okay, any questions for Terry by the commission? Public input on this item? Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Schmidt, second by Aaron's for approval. Call roll please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Epstein.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Next item I got is riprap. Again, I got two bidders on this. And again, on this one, my recommendation is going to be award to both bidders because it's at different locations. Again, this will benefit the county as depending on where we are, where we need the material at, we can go get it. So first bidder, LG Everest for class A is 40 dollars and 50 cents a ton, Knife River is 45 dollars a ton. Class B for LG Everest is 40, 75 a ton, Knife River is 45 a ton. Class C LG Everest is 44, 20 a ton and no bid for Knife River.
Okay, you heard the prices. Any questions by this commission? Public input on this matter?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Which ones, again, so we're clear?
It's going to LG Everest.
We'll be awarding to both, both, both vendors.
Companies.
Okay. Yep.
Yes, so we're clear on that, all right. Motion by Schmidt, was it, and second by Aaron's? Okay, no other discussion, call roll please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Epstein.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, thank you.
Next item I have is Rock Salt and Transportation. Again, I had four bidders this year for salt. Basically, again, so we use this in the wintertime on roads in place of sand. Four bidders, so Nebraska Salt and Grain had a bid of 99 dollars and 65 cents a ton. Black Strap Incorporated had 85 dollars and five cents a ton. Central Salt LLC was 92 dollars and 15 cents and Johnson Feed was 82 dollars and 27 cents. So my recommendation is to award it to Johnson Feed at 82 dollars and 27 cents.
Okay, discussion? If not, a motion please. Excuse me, public input?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Aaron's, second by Schmidt. Call the role, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
All right, last one I got for you is weed chemical. So I had three bidders for these items. First item is Toradon 22K Nutrien Solutions is 50 dollars and 84 cents a gallon. Bande Supply is 53 dollars and 45 cents and Heritage Landscape was 85 dollars and 87 cents. Recommendation on this one is to award to Nutrien Solutions for 50 dollars and 84 cents for Toradon.
Okay, any questions? If not, public input? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve to nutrient.
Okay, motion by Aaron's.
I'll second.
Second by Landine. Any other discussion? All right, call roll please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, thank you.
Next item is Freelix. Again, this is a per gallon price. Nutrien, Nutrien Solutions is 32, 75 a gallon. Bande Supply, 32, 75 a gallon. Heritage Landscape, 32, 75. My recommendation is to award all three, that way depending when we order for availability that way depending when we order for availability of product at thirty-two seventy-five.
What do you use this for, Terry?
As spray.
Spray.
Weed, weed control. Yep.
Oh. Is this surfactant or something, or is this the actual chemical?
Uh, the, the Freelix?
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's a replacement for, um, two-four D, I think.
Oh, okay.
I think it's a, it's so, so we've, we've been trying different chemicals because after a while, you know, your, your weeds will, will grow, they'll have a.
Immune.
Is what they say, so, but we've been, we've been having some good luck with this Freelix. And, and, and there's some positive sides on it. I think it has less drift, I believe, and, um.
And we can use this both spring and fall, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Terry by the commission? Public input? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Schmidt, second by Aaron's. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes, motion carried.
Last item I got for weed chemicals is Milestone. Uh, again, three bidders, Nutrien Solutions, two-hundred-and-ninety dollars a gallon, Van D Supply, two-hundred-and-ninety dollars a gallon, and then Heritage Landscape is three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars a gallon. So, uh, my recommendation is to be, uh, award, uh, Milestone to Nutrien Solutions and Van D Supply at two-hundred-and-ninety dollars a gallon.
Okay, questions for Terry? If not, community or public input? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Aaron's, second by Landine. No further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
All right, next item I have, uh, number eight, number eight on the agenda, board action to award the twenty-twenty-four asphalt surfacing project. Uh, again, uh, this is a project. We had, um, seven bidders, very competitive bids this year. Um, on the bids, so we had a base, a base project that we bid, and that is, I think that was about ten miles, nine miles, uh, of mill and overlay, and it was going to be County Road one-ten west of Minnesota Avenue one-fifteen, and then we had two miles of one-seventeen from around about south, and then we have three miles of, uh, north of two-seventy-first Street on, uh, County Road one-eleven, which is north of T. So that was the base bid. Um, we are also doing a separate project on County Road one-oh-two, two-sixty-ninth, um, just south or just on the west side of County Road one-eleven there, where we're doing some, uh, full-dep reclamation on that and base stabilization. Uh, so we put an alternate on this. Uh, the original plan was the county was going to go in and pave this ourselves, those five miles that we're going to be doing this FDR on, but we wanted to see what kind of price we'd get from a contractor to just come in and pave it. Um, so we added an alternate on. Uh, so this is, uh, these numbers are going to be with the alternate because we're, I would like to accept the alternate bid on that as well because it'll save us time not having to pave it, um, to do that. So seven bidders. First of all, um, I'll get, uh, engineer's estimate was two million, uh, four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-four thousands dollars and sixty cents. Uh, low bid for the project was two million, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars, four-hundred-and-forty-six and sixty-eight cents, and that was with Dunick Incorporated. So that's going to be my recommendation for low bid. Um, the rest of the bids, uh, again, very competitive bidding this year. Merlyn Roy's paving was two million, three-hundred-and-sixty-five, eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Journey Group, two million, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven, two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Double H paving was two million, four-hundred-and-eighty-two, two-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. The two minutes paving was two million, five-hundred-and-eighty, five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and five cents. The last one was Central Specialties was two million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine, one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. So the alternate bid, like I said, is going to be on County Road one-oh-two, which is up north, um, again, on the west side, west of County Road one-eleven, we have five miles, so. Any questions on that?
Questions by the commission? If not, public input on the matter? Okay, do we have a motion then?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Motion by Schmidt, second by Aaron's. Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
All right, next item I have is, uh, board action to award the twenty-twenty-four micro-surfacing project. Uh, again, we had, uh, two, two bidders on this project. Um, engineer's estimate was nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. Um, the low bid was to Aztec Corp. at eight-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and ninety cents. The next bidder was Missouri Petroleum Products with a bid of eight-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and, eight-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety dollars and eighty cents. Um, you know, we had asphalt surfacing as well, nine-hundred-and-ten thousand, two-hundred-and-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Again, uh, the micro this year is going to be on County Road one-oh-six. Basically, it's going to be from I-29 going all the way to the east to County Road one, one-thirty-five. There's going to be about a mile of, um, Cliff Avenue that's going to be on there, and then there's going to be four miles on one-ten. It's going to be east of Harrisburg, um, all the way over to County Road one, one-thirty-five over there. So with this bid, um, this, we did, we are going to do this project at night, so the, it was, uh, cost was elevated a little bit, and the main reason we're doing that is because if we're going to be up on County Road one-oh-six, Cliff Avenue, um, we're going to have a lot of traffic, and, and we just feel that the cost would offset from doing it during the day with all the delays they would have trying to get equipment and material into the machine as we do it at night, so. Um, you know, we got a pretty good price on it. Um, I will say one other thing with this project. We did do kind of a regional bid project with, uh, five other counties that are doing micro projects. Um, again, each project was bid separately, but we all bid them at the same time as, as kind of a regional thing, and, uh, I know that there was, uh, two of the projects that Aztec, which, which is our low bid, which were awarded to them, and then the other four, I believe, are going to be awarded to Asphalt Surfacing Company, which had a low bid on those, so.
Questions for Terry?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank, thanks, thank you, Terry, for looking outside the box here with doing a nighttime construction project. I know that's not really the norm necessarily here, but it is in many other places, so thank you for looking into that, and hopefully you work with, like, the Sheriff's Department on traffic control and.
Yeah.
Getting people, you know, like, people around here aren't accustomed to that, so hopefully we can.
Yep, we'll have, we'll have notification, notification up, we'll have message boards up, uh, for the project, uh, to make people aware, and I think, I believe the start time is, uh, six PM, I think, then I think they got to be off the road by six AM, I think, or six-thirty, so.
Thank you.
So we're looking for a night when there's a full moon, when they can work at night.
I'm, I'm told it's going to be lit up like daytime, so.
I imagine. All right, any other questions for Terry? Public input? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, my motion by Landine, second by Aaron's. Um, I guess, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes, thank you.
Next item I have is, uh, board action to, uh, purchase base stabilizing agent off the Harding County bid. Um, so basically, uh, but what we're doing is Harding County had bid, uh, this product, um, early, well, late last year, early this year, uh, for base stabilization. Again, we're going to be using this on that County Road one-oh-two project. Um, again, this is going to be, this is the same material we used last year down on, uh, County Road one-fifty-two on that big project that we did down there. Um, so basically, this is going to be twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents per gallon, um, and that's for the eight to fourteen totes, and we'll be right at that eight totes is what we'll be purchasing, so.
All right, any questions?
Is that the black stuff you put on after you put that on?
No, this, this here is actually a liquid that they mix with water.
Okay.
Um, so basically what's going to happen and, and they'll, uh, uh, I would encourage you to come up and visit the site, let me know, I can let you all know when, when it's going to happen. You can come up and watch it, watch it for yourself. Uh, so basically, we're going to, they'll come in and we're going to grind everything up first, grind the road up first.
Yeah.
And once they're done grinding, that'll get ground, compacted, they'll come back through, they'll grind, and then they'll inject the stabilizer into it, and then they'll compact it, shape the road, and then it'll be ready for an asphalt mat. So.
How long does that take, Terry, start to finish?
Um, so we got five miles to do, uh, so ten days. Uh, it takes, they can go a mile a day, um, with the reclaim, and then the injection is a mile a day as well. And then that's just for that part, and then, you know, paving it, or having a contractor come in, um, to do that, it's probably maybe a week. So, and, and that section of road, um, we will be closing that. Um, we did that last year down on one-fifty-two, and it worked really well, uh, saved ourselves a lot of, a lot of headaches with traffic. Yeah, people are going to have to find a different route, um, but hopefully it's only for, you know, a month or two, so.
And, and when's that going to start approximately?
Tentatively, we have, uh, the reclaim to come in, like, the eighteenth or something of May, I believe. So, so once he comes in, we can get it injected, you know, because we're hoping that, uh, the paved project, since we're going to do the alternate, they're going to pave that. Hopefully, that'll tie in well with them. They can start paving, doing their mill and, mill and fill on the other stuff in June. That'll work right in. By the time we're done with that up there, they should be able to go over and pave that, so.
And you send out notices to, like, the media and all these about, uh, these projects ahead of time, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and I, and I will again, and, and I, I send it out, it's posted on our, uh, the county website. Uh, I send it out to the Sheriff's Department, I send it out to Harold. I don't know if Harold forwards it out to any other media, but I know the Sheriff's Department posts it on their Facebook page, so, uh, but we, we, and I'll, and I'll try to get it out to, uh, being up there. You know, probably send it to City of Sioux Falls, there might be some folks, City of T, uh, maybe, maybe some folks over in Turner County, I might send it over to, to them over there, just to let people know that this is happening, so.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Any other questions? Not public input on the matter? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Aaron's.
Second.
Second by Schmidt. Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
All right, last item I got for you today, uh, board action to approve, uh, the purchase off of a Harding County bid, uh, for full-dep reclamation and injection and layback work. Again, uh, this is going to be the, uh, the grinding up of the road and injecting that base stabilizer into it. Um, the cost for this is going to be a dollar twenty-eight a square yard. Uh, so basically, there'll be two, two charges, so it's going to be, end up being like two-fifty-six, uh, square yard for both processes for a complete project on this. So, and we'll be doing five miles of this. Uh, again, um, full-dep base stabilization and two-inch mat on this on County Road one-oh-two or two-sixty-ninth Street from County Line to four-sixty-nine, so.
Questions? Public input on the matter? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Aaron's, your second?
I'll second.
Second by Landine. No other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Next opportunity for public comment or non-agenda items. Are there any of those today? Good morning.
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I'm here today. As you know, I talk about election integrity, but something came to, um, my, in my inbox regarding, um, Ohio Sheriff Richard Jones attended the National Sheriff's Association and was briefed by the FBI Director, Christopher Ray. Ray said that when we're looking at this, um, this, the warnings and the red flags that they are getting right now is more than before nine-eleven. The sheriff said, "I can't tell you any, everything, but I want the public to know that we're in terrible way right now." We're going, they're going to attack our elections, all of them, local, national, elections. Officials even locally will, must be warned to prepare for cyber attacks when we are looking at our elections. Now, in the, the warnings, the FBI warned that China's hacking infrastructure in our elections, and we are helpless to stop it. Yet we are allowing Chinese military-aged men's to cross the border illegally every day. Hand counting, and I know you're looking at me and going, "What does hand counting have to do with this, these cyber attacks?" Hand counting, paper ballots in precincts is not just fraud prevent, prevention, but it's also continuity of government. When you're talking about power outages, when you're talking about cyber attacks, when you were talking about what if the tabulators, the poll books, total vote system is not operable and we are at an election. We need to have backup, and we need to do it well. I was out at the Capitol, and we had, uh, citizens have been working on this for a very long time. We're working with different states to come up with a method that is quick and doable, not only for precinct, for a county, for the state, for national. It is important, um, to us as citizens. There was eighty-plus people there. We were thirty minutes or thirty steps away from the Secretary of State office, and many of those that were standing out there supported the Secretary of State to get elected. We were ignored. Minnehaha County had ESNS actually come to their county to show the, um, citizens there, and with their own election, or excuse me, computer expert and computer software, people were allowed to ask questions, and the auditor was shown in front of the public how to download public information off that tabulator. We are fighting enough.
I'll give you about another minute, okay, if you can wrap up, please.
What I'm saying is we need to work on this as a team. Right now, the Secretary of State is having the auditors come this weekend, and they're going to look at what Minnehaha did. You know, we pay eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars for ENS to do education and maintenance on our machine, and they did not even show up to stand up for themselves when you reconfirm that contract. I want them to come to Lincoln County. I want us to look at, be able to ask the same questions that they did in Minnehaha County. In one county, or, yes, the five commissioners unanimously voted to stop using the tabulators and hand count the primaries. There are citizens across the state who are signing petitions to get enough to take it to the vote of the people. People don't trust the elections. Right now, I'm sorry, but I don't trust our Secretary of State to make good decisions. She obviously didn't last week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Any other opportunities for public comment?
Scott Montgomery, Fairview. I just want to thank the commission for taking the time to, uh, come out and visit with the McInnes and to come and visit with the church. I don't know what's going to change, but I just want to say thank you for doing what you're doing, and, uh, it makes me feel like you guys actually care, and, uh, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public input? Or opportunity for public comment? All right, um, commissioners, anything to report?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, uh, comment on a couple of, uh, measures that our representatives were successful in getting. I want to thank, um, Commissioner Otten and Commissioner Boland. They have House Bill ten-thirty-nine, and what was that? Is a payment for legal expenses for crimes committed at a facility maintained by the Department of Justice. That got out of the House at sixty-nine to zero, and I think it goes to the Senate, uh, maybe it's already been there or something. But it is, uh, shows a little leadership, and they're concerned about our possible, uh, exposure if and when a penitentiary is ever located here in Lincoln County or wherever, whatever county it gets in, to not have that be, uh, encumbrance on your budget because it's a huge matter. It's well over a million dollars a year that this thing covers. The other thing that, uh, commission, or the representative of Otten got ahead of was. Commissioner, or the Representative Otten got ahead of was this, making appropriation for increase the construction cost of infrastructure at Lake Alvin and Newell Lake. And if you've ever been there, if you, I, I listened to the testimony. And Lake Alvin has a spillway which is antiquated, old. And we've had issues where the county road has about, I imagine it's 30 or 40 feet above where the water level would be. So if that spillway goes out and that road goes out, I don't know how we would ever, we'd have to build a bridge because I mean, this is huge. We got culverts underneath that we've dealt with this. So this kind of funding is really critical, I think, for us. And I thank them both, Congressman Jensen as well, or Assemblyman Jessen. I think our representatives are working hard to get this stuff through. So I'd like to commend them for their efforts. The other one that I think is relatively important to us here is Senate Bill 201, which is dealing with the CO2 pipeline. The other one primarily, and, and there's a lot of legislative maneuvering, I think, to be the term. And then there was House Bill 1085 by Representative Mortensen that puts some stiffness in the ability for landowners not to just accept anybody driving on their land and wanting to do surveys and inspection. So they have to get a sighting permit from the PUC. And that did pass, 47 to 17. I don't know if it's, if it's cleared the Senate. But these are two measures that, you know, are, are concerned to us because we have pipelines. And, you know, when you think about it, everybody, we've got, we've got one in Hudson. We've got a pipeline. I don't know where this thing is going to go. Finally, I haven't, I haven't, maybe you have, I haven't seen any route necessarily finalized. But I was thinking, if you got one in Hudson, you got one in Chancellor, you got one over there in Marion, somewhere along the line, there's a lot of pipe that's going to be laid here if and when this thing ever passes. So these are critical issues to us and setbacks and all the rest of that stuff goes along with it. So I would say stay tuned to what's happening in Pierre because when is their final date?
When is March 6? Or no, am I wrong on that?
March 7. So within the next week, they're going, a lot of stuff's going to happen. So, and it's important for us to follow that.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Any others? Okay, if not, do we need to go into executive session for any items, Drew? Okay, and which ones are those?
Subsection 3 and 4.
Item number 3?
Subsections 3 and 4.
Subsection 3 and 4. Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to go into executive session under SDCL 125, 2 sub 3 and sub 4.
Second.
Motion by Landine, second by Aaron's to go into executive session on those measures. Any discussion? Okay, do I have to ask for public input on that? No, do I? Public input? Okay, go ahead. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Thank you. You come out of executive session?
So moved.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, a motion by Schmidt, second by Aaron's. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn on voice vote, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Aaron's, second by Schmidt? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.